Will the May meeting of the Suffolk City School Board please come to order? And we will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance by Dr. Buck.
Would you please stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated.
Thank you, Dr. Buck. And now we'll call for certification of the closed meeting.
A resolution of certification of the closed meeting of May 10th, 2018 pursuant to Section 2.2-3712 of the Code of Virginia, 1950, as amended. Could I have a second, please?
Second.
Board Member Brooks Buck?
Yes.
Board Member Dobransky?
Yes.
Board Member Mitnick?
Yes.
Board Member Skeeter?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Byram?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Public speakers on agenda topics, I believe we have none?
No, we do not have any person signed up.
Okay. And now reports by the Superintendent, Dr. Whitney.
Thank you, and good evening, everyone. As you can see, the first item on the reports by the Superintendent is the new schools' construction update. I guess this could be under "Good News Report." I'm going to call to the podium Mr. Terry Napier to give us an update, the latest, on our two new schools that will be opening this fall, Colonel Fred Cherry Middle School and Florence Bowser. Mr. Napier.
Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening.
We are going to give you an update tonight. We're going to show you lots of pictures, and we certainly have a lot to show you. Things are going on at a very rapid pace at both school sites. Project status, beginning with Florence Bowser. Total progress currently is at 92 percent, and the substantial completion date is June the 15th. We don't expect any delays beyond that, so we are looking good at that building at this point. Colonel Fred Cherry Middle School, total progress at that building is 84 percent complete. Substantial completion date on that one is July the 15th. So it's about four weeks behind the elementary school, but if you recall, it actually started three weeks later than the elementary started, so we're not too concerned about that date either, and we're looking good right on that one as well. There's what it's going to look like in about a month. And there's the front elevation this week. As you can see, it's beginning to look more and more like our concept picture, which we've been showing you for two years, and we are just about there. That is the main entryway facing the building from the parking lot. Second grade wing, which is on the right-hand side of the parking lot as you face the building. You can see the curtain walls there. Those are finished. There's a lot going on inside that we're going to show you in just a second as well. There's the kindergarten wing from the front parking lot, bus loops to the right, kindergarten play area, which, by the way, Mr. Hines is very proud of. Rear elevation showing the stairway. In the back of the building, there's also a curtain wall there, as you can see. That is the rear elevation from the west side of the building. That is the mechanical room, also from the west side of the building. There's the bus loop. We've been paving out there for about a week now. We should have that done probably by early next week, if not sooner. There's the interior, one of the interior hallways, and you can see the terrazzo design and colors. All of the terrazzo has been poured. Most of it, with the exception of the front foyer, has been ground and looks like that. It's not all as clean as that at this point, but you can see what it's going to look like. That is the rubber tile in one of the classrooms. This picture's a little discolored, but you can see the patterns there that we're going to have in those classrooms as well. That is the cafeteria, looking towards the stage. This facility has the combined gymnasium cafeteria, just like Pioneer and Hillpoint have Creekside as well, but you can see the colors in there now. The terrazzo floor in there is finished, and it has been ground, so when you walk in there now, you can really see what it looks like. There's a better picture of the classroom patterns. Those are marker boards, still covered up. We're going to uncover those here pretty soon. Those are kindergarten reading nooks on the first floor. That's something that we added to this building that we don't have in the other prototypes. Those are the learning stairs that are in front of the media center. This is also something that we added to this building that is not present in the other prototypes as well. There's the kitchen. All the equipment's been put in there. Most of it has gone through preliminary inspections. Everything's looking good in there. Colonel Fred Cherry. That's what it's going to look like on July 15th. There's what it looks like today. So as you can see, it's coming along pretty well. There's the rear view of the classroom wings. You can see the three separate wings there. That's the front view. That area in the center, that's the administrative area. To the left is classrooms. To the right, far right, is the gymnasium. There's the cafeteria and cherry. It also looks very nice. Something that we haven't done, we have the waves overhead. We have a lot going on in there that we think, and our architects agree, are going to make that a very unique space. There's the cafeteria again, looking towards the kitchen and the serving line. That's standing on the second floor. That is Main Street that goes out at the bottom. It runs the entire length of the building. You can stand on the second floor and look over and see down there, and that's what it looks like looking back towards the cafeteria. The classroom rings are to the left. You can't see them in that picture. There is one of the classroom wing. I guess you would refer to it as a lobby area. Those wooden structures there, that is where the half-height lockers will stand. Just to the right of those, where that rail is, you can look over. There's a collaborative space below that and a stairway to the left. There's that view again, looking over that railing towards the cafeteria. You can see the waves in the top of that picture. There is the classroom area as you enter it from the hallway. Classrooms are to the left, lockers are to the right. There is a collaborative area down at the end of that hallway on the right as well, and then there's stairs that go down. There's a look at one of the group restrooms, the tile pattern that we chose to go in there. That's the main office. Doesn't look like much right now, but give it another couple of weeks. There's the admin area looking out towards main reception. There's the auditorium, the overhead of the auditorium. We are actually building that one from the top down rather than the bottom up. That was done for reasons that the contractor felt were necessary. We do not have a floor in that auditorium yet. That is coming very soon, but there was a space left open in the front of the building so that we can get in and out of there and make sure that gets done when it needs to get done. Any questions about any of that? Everything looks good out there.
Any questions from board?
Are the bathroom stalls individual stalls?
Yes.
At our door, right?
Yes.
Okay.
All of them.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Napier. The next item on the reports by the Superintendent is our strategic plan update. You may recall, at the beginning of this year, we had a session in which we began to develop not only our goals, but we also talked about performance measures and wanted to get community input. Tonight, Dr. Latoya Harrison, our Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction, will share with you just where we are with our strategic plan. Dr. Harrison?
Thank you, Dr. Whitney. Good evening, Vice Chair Byram, school board members, and Dr. Whitney. As Dr. Whitney just stated, I will just be sharing with you a brief update on our strategic planning process. As you recall, we established goals in our December board meeting, and you voted on the goals that are listed here on the slide. And I've included sort of a recap of our strategic planning timeline and where we are currently. So at this point, this evening, I'm just sharing with you the revised draft based on stakeholder input and some of the changes that we've made to the plan for your review, and then in the next board meeting, we will have an opportunity for you to vote on the strategic plan. And in the time being, if you have any feedback or additional changes that need to be made, we can certainly do that. So moving on to the structure of the plan, just as a recap, the plan includes, of course, the board's adopted goals, along with strategies and initiatives, which is pretty much our core work around achieving the goals that the board has established. And then the performance measures really detail how we will be measuring ourselves over the five years as we look to accomplish the goals that the board has established. And then, and I'm not going to read everything on the slides to you because you have it there as a reference, and this is a plan for, a revised version of the plan for you to review at your convenience, and then, again, in the June board meeting, we'll come back together and can look at the plan and determine if there are any additional changes that need to be made, and if not, then we can move forward, and you can vote on the plan at that time. This is the slide that I really wanted to draw your attention to, and this is where I just highlight some of the changes that were made, just to give you an example of the types of feedback that we received from stakeholders and some of the changes and additions that were made as a result of that. So, for example, we heard from some of our stakeholders that we needed to offer more STEM and computer science opportunities. So under Goal One, we added some language to include expanding course offerings in high-demand career areas under Goal One. We didn't specify STEM and computer science in the goal, but we made it broad enough so that it would be flexible over the five years in case there are other types of science courses that we might need to add or other courses that are related to some of the high demand career areas. But as we work out our action plan for each goal and get more specific in terms of the precise steps that we'll be taking, that's where we'll kind of flesh out that, flesh that out a little bit more and can specify some of the computer science course offerings that we'll be adding in the very near future. And then, for example, we had some feedback around our performance measures under Goal One, and some of our stakeholders gave input or feedback that they thought we should include growth rather than just focusing on proficiency, which aligns very well with the new accreditation system, which does take into account student growth. So we added growth along with proficiency as one of the performance measures. We also received feedback that we needed improved communication with parents, and so we added as a performance measure, increasing the use of Peach Jar, Hack, and other communication tools in the division. And then another kind of big one that was communicated to us by several stakeholders, in particular, a lot of our community members, they really wanted a glossary or some sort of explanation of the terms that are mentioned throughout the strategic plan. We use a lot of acronyms in education, and so that's very understandable that people would need some type of a reference document. So we did include a glossary that will be linked in the online document. So once the strategic plan is finalized and posted on our website, we'll have, all of the terms that are in the glossary will be hyperlinked so that people can click on the term, and it'll direct them to a glossary that explains the terms. And I did include a copy of the glossary in the documents for this evening, so that's, you can find that in your board books as well. And so in addition to, beyond those examples, there were other areas where we just did some wordsmithing and just some slight tweaks here and there to some of the language, just to fine-tune it and refine it a bit more. But this is what I just wanted to present to you this evening, just so that you could see some of the changes that have been made and that you would have an opportunity to review the plan and offer any additional feedback and input as we fine-tune this and present the final plan next month.
Any questions, anyone? Comments?
What is Hack?
What is Hack?
Yes.
Hack is our...
Home access.
Home access center. Thank you. I was... Thank you, guys. Appreciate that.
It's like grade speed.
Little help for my friends. And that's our portal where parents can go online and can see student grades.
Okay. Thank you.
And that's included in glossary?
Yes, ma'am. It is. It is in the glossary.
It's on page 48.
Forty-eight?
Any other questions or concern?
The only thing that I have, and it's been a concern since I've been here, I realize what we're doing digitally to communicate with parents. Do we have plans for those parents, as we do have some, who do not have devices and access at home?
We certainly will make the plan, paper copies of the plan available. It may not be... One of the things that we've talked about in terms of how we communicate the plan is kind of creating like a tri-fold brochure that we can make available to parents so that they can kind of see the plan at a glance. And of course, if a parent doesn't have access to the internet and would like the full printout of the glossary and all of that, we certainly would be more than happy to make that available to any parent. But we will make the brochures, we'll make sure those are widely distributed so that people can see the plan and understand exactly what we are striving for.
Thank you.
And we've had that conversation about not just the plan, but other items as well, because we do recognize that some parents may not have access, whether it's a paper copy that they request. We do that with the handbook as well, so, yes.
Thank you. Any other concerns? Okay.
Thank you, Dr. Harrison.
The next item on the list, number three, is the Community Service Hours update. As you may recall, a few months ago, you asked that we periodically give you an update on where our seniors are with community service hours. Dr. Byrd, our Director of Secondary Leadership, will be presenting an update. Dr. Byrd?
Thank you. Greetings, Vice Chair Byram, board members, and Dr. Whitney. Today, I will share some information, updates on a community service hour requirement. This is located on page 51 of your board book. Beginning with our senior class in 2017, we implemented this community service hour requirement with the purpose to promote civic responsibility through active participation and service experiences, to enhance students' ability and desire to impact the community in a positive manner, to foster a sense of caring for others, and to develop a habit of volunteering service to those in need. What you will see here on the graph is the guidelines, and I'm going to kind of move through these slides because, as Dr. Whitney mentioned, this has been presented several On this particular slide, I just want to bring to everyone's attention a goal that we have set for students as they enter ninth, 10th, and 11th grades, so that they are not tasked their senior year with earning all of their hours at one time. During this current school year, our seniors have participated in some of the following activities listed here, and this is just a very, very, very short list of some of the things our students have done. They volunteered at OB-C hospital, escorting patients and assisting nurses, et cetera, assisted with summer, the summer school programs, both the middle and elementary level, assisted with freshman orientation, helped at the local library, assisted with the Special Olympics in Suffolk. They served Thanksgiving meals with local organizations, served in animal and homeless shelters, and participated in school and community beautification process, projects, excuse me. So you can see here, we're finally making some good progress towards that 100 percent of our 12th graders earning their community service hours. We are currently at 78, and that number is increasing every day. This slide shows that in the division, our seniors have earned over 48,000 hours they've completed, and all students to date are at 80, over 81,000. One thing that I do want to highlight about this particular chart here is if you look at the, as the months progress, and if you look at the change from our seniors from March to April, what we expected to happen has happened, and that is everyone is now eager to turn in their community service hours. So prior to this particular presentation, we were sitting at 20 percent, 30 percent, and so on. Matter of fact, this morning, as I met with graduation coaches during our meeting, I think it was Ms. Duplain over here, had mentioned she received a message that she had gotten 10 more in this morning, and those are not reflected in this presentation. In your board book, you're going to see a slide that shows this same information in a graph format. It's not projected here today. But in effort to improve the process, we've introduced community service hour requirement at the middle school, so students as early as sixth grade may start earning their community service hours. We developed a new high school transcript that now includes the community service hours earned to date, and we're going to mail that at the end of each school year. We formally reminded our students of this requirement during the second and third nine weeks. We promoted more opportunities at each school to earn hours. And just recently, earlier this month, we provided a recognition letter and certificate to those who met the April 15th deadline. And this is just a sample. They would have received a similar letter with their school letterhead on it that basically said, as a ninth grade, you might remember that target was 17 hours. So congratulations for meeting your 17 hours by April 15th, and here's a certificate. So something that they can also include in their packet to demonstrate that they have met community service hours. Once again, these are just some of the resources that our community can use to share opportunities that are available for our students, as well as how the students can access different forms and opportunities online. Finally, this is a flyer that will go home with all students, as well as we'll have posters made, put up in the lobby areas of the school, reminding everyone of summer opportunities for community service. And this concludes my presentation. Are there any questions?
The only thing that I'll add, we still obviously challenge with students waiting until the last minute, which is just human nature, but you can see that we're in a much better position this year than we were last year this time. So I think it's catching on, and I think the incentives of recognizing students who have met it per year is something that hopefully will motivate them as well.
Anyone have questions or concern?
No, but I'd like to say, when you have students to speak in any setting, they normally come up, I have so many community service hours, and they are proud to have those hours. So, you know, I think we've done something right to get them involved in community services. Yes.
I had a question.
Yes, ma'am.
I think I asked Superintendent just the other day. On the school level, Lakeland, Nance, Monrova, Kings Fork High School, what type of activity, are they sponsoring any activities of recognition for students or doing something a little special, like when they get to the ninth grade and they get their 16 hours besides the letter that goes, you know, home or whatever? Are there any other things, incentives, that they're doing to sort of motivate the children to continue to get their hours?
Well, this year, our first step was to implement the actual certificates, and at this point, for this year, that was what our plan was. We had talked about other opportunities for the future, but as of this year, that was kind of our first step. And it is encouraging to see, you may remember on some of the previous slides, that our ninth, 10th, and 11th graders do have hours now, which last year, that was very different. It was all a senior push, and the others were kind of, those graphs weren't moving very much during the year.
Okay. Thank you. Any others?
Thank you.
All right. The last item on the Superintendent's report is the Calendar of Special Events. And if you'll turn to page 59, you'll see we have a number of things that are either taking place or coming up. I do want to recognize this is National Teacher Appreciation Week, as well as Teacher Assistant Appreciation Day was yesterday, National School Nurse Day was yesterday. We also will be recognizing the Superintendent's Star Award Honorees on May 24th, our retirement banquet, where we recognize our retirees, on May 31st, and of course, as students reminded us today, graduation on June 9th. That concludes the Superintendent's report. Back to you.
Dr. Whitney?
Yes.
Can you get us the dates for the senior awards nights?
I don't have them with me, but we'll send them to you. Yes.
Thank you, sir.
If you'll look at your consent agenda items, review those, if there are any items that need to be discussed or removed, look those over.
Madam Vice Chair, I'd like to move to accept the consent agenda.
Second, the motion. Okay. We have a first and second.
Board Member Brooks Buck?
Yes.
Board Member Dobransky?
Yes.
Board Member Mitnick?
Yes.
Board Member Skeeter?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Byram?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Unfinished business, Dr. Whitney?
Yes. As you know, we keep that as a placeholder, the school, the school board's approved financial plan, 2018, 2019. I will remind the general republic that the city should be voting on their budget on May 16th. Within that, the city manager has proposed full funding as requested.
And I think we need to schedule a special meeting to adopt the financial plan?
Yes, ma'am, and I'll throw out two dates, May 17th and May 18th, either day, and either time, actually. We're flexible with that, May 17th or May 18th.
What days are they? What days?
What days are they?
May 17th is on a Tuesday, I'm sorry, Thursday, and May 18th is on a Friday.
Seventeenth in the morning, we probably have a pupil personnel committee at 9:00.
Right.
Do you want to do it after that?
We actually could do it before that if you wanted, at 8:00. Well, actually, the clerk has reminded me, of course, with the board, the city council meeting being the 16th, we probably would need to do it later that day or on the 18th.
Right.
Thank you, clerk.
So the 18th is a Friday?
Yes.
What time? Time for anybody? Any suggestions?
Whatever you suggest, yeah.
10:00 a.m.?
I'm sorry?
10:00 a.m. on Friday, the 18th?
Can we do it earlier?
Earlier?
Like 9:00?
9:00 a.m.?
Can we do it at 9:00?
9:00.
9:00 a.m.?
Are we going to do?
May 18th?
Where are we going to do that at?
We'll do it in the conference room, on the seventh floor.
Okay. Seven-four conference.
May 18th. Okay.
May 18th, 9:00.
All right. May 18th at 9:00 a.m. All right. And...
That is an action item.
Yep. Do we have a motion for that?
I move that we meet on May 18th at 9:00 a.m. to consider the financial plan.
Board Member Brooks Buck?
Yes.
Board Member Dobransky?
Yes.
Board Member Mitnick?
Yes.
Board Member Skeeter?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Byram?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay. Any other items on unfinished business?
No, ma'am.
Okay, moving along. Public speakers on non-agenda items. I believe we have one gentleman, Mr. Robert Lincoln. If you'll come forth.
Good evening, members of the board, school board. As you know, my name is Robert Lincoln, and tonight I want to talk to you, and I want to address the cost of some athletic programs for the Suffolk schools. As you know, we use our schools to train students' minds and, to some extent, to train their bodies for their physical well-being. We train their bodies with games or sports such as football, soccer, lacrosse... Good evening, members of the board, school board. As you know, my name is Robert Lincoln, and tonight I want to talk to you, and I want to address the cost of some athletic programs for the Suffolk schools. As you know, we use our schools to train students' minds, and to some extent, to train their bodies for their physical well-being. We train their bodies with games or sports such as football, soccer, lacrosse, and field hockey. These are well-established sports, but they come with some problems such as injuries and substantial cost of equipment. These games also limit the skills that each player utilizes when playing. Today, I want to introduce you to a new game that, if added to the school's athletic programs, will benefit more of the children and will cost the schools and the children almost nothing to play. This sport is designed to eliminate serious injuries and the need for special equipment. The sport is called pole ball. That's spelled P-O-L-E-B-A-L-L. The sport utilizes each child's ability to run, throw, catch, kick, and work together with others on a team. It is designed to eliminate serious injuries and to reduce minor injuries and possibly eliminate most of them. A detailed description of the game can be found on the website, poleballworld.com. And this is a copy of the rulebook, and I'll leave a copy of the rulebook with the, for the board, and it also gives them some guidelines. And the game is designed to be played on a large field, a football field, soccer field, or any field like that. But there is a modified game, modified rules for the game that can be used for children in small playgrounds or on a basketball court or in small areas, but it can be all adults playing on small areas, too. It is important for the school board to save money and still provide many benefits for the students. So, to save money, I want to tell you about the lower cost and greater benefits associated with pole ball compared to other sports. Recently, on April eighteenth, two thousand eighteen, an article appeared on page one of the sports section of the Virginia Pilot. The article said that there were one thousand young lacrosse players from the Southampton Road Schools who are trying to get the game of lacrosse recognized as a varsity sport in the high schools. One thing such recognition would do, would probably do, is get the schools to absorb the costs associated with the sport. And this is the copy, this is the copy of the article that appeared with a whole front page of the sports section of the newspaper. So, I want to compare for you the cost of one thousand players to play pole ball compared to the cost of one thousand players to play lacrosse. I prepared a cost comparison, which I will leave with the board. And I got the cost of these, this equipment from Dick's Sporting Goods and online from, on Amazon. This cost comparison shows that to play lacrosse safely, you need five hundred and fifty-two dollars worth of equipment for each player. This does not include the cost of shoes, as we will assume the players will bring, will buy their own shoes. Now, to play pole ball, there is no equipment needed. All that is needed is number three or number four soccer ball, which costs eight dollars at Walmart. So, to play lacrosse for one thousand players, that's at five hundred and fifty-two dollars, would be five hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars. And to play pole ball, the schools play pole ball, one thousand players, I should say, the cost would be eight thousand dollars. So, you compare fifty-two thousand with eight thousand, five hundred and fifty-two thousand with eight thousand. And that would, that eight thousand would give every player a ball, and you know, if you have teams, you really don't need a ball for every player. A similar cost comparison can be made with football and field hockey and other sports. I'm asking the board to consider the benefits of the game for children and the athletic programs of all the schools, the elementary schools, the middle schools, and the high schools of Suffolk. Then the board can recommend that the game be introduced to the students through the physical education classes and the intermediate programs. So, two balls for school, for each school would cost sixteen dollars. I'll be happy to assist the schools in introducing the game to their students. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Lincoln.
Let me ask you any questions?
And do we have anyone else who would like to come before the board?
Did I give you two copies, one copy there? Two, I need one more. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lincoln.
Thank you.
Hello, and good evening. My name is Meg Diggs, and I reside at fifty-two fourteen Regatta Point Road. I'm here today to voice my concern about our public education system. I believe that as Americans, we are the owners of the public school system, and as owners, we bear the responsibility to participate in this system. Accountability for our public schools, their safety and its employees, and its funding rests with me and with the rest of the system's owners. Our children's future depends on the improvement of our public schools, and this improvement depends on our participation. I currently have three children at Northern Shores Elementary. I am extremely fortunate to be in a position where I am able to regularly volunteer at the school. For the last five years, I have made it a priority to volunteer weekly in each of my children's classrooms. By volunteering, I've had a front row seat to some amazing teachers in action. Seeing the way that they manage the classroom and how they taught the lessons, because of that experience, I'm able to provide that reinforcement at home with my children. It has been incredibly beneficial. There have been many times that I've listened to a teacher and wanted to yell, "Oh, yeah", or "Yeah, that was right," but I'm afraid they're going to kick me out of the classroom. In the last five years of volunteering in the Suffolk public schools, I've had the privilege of watching teachers and support staff interact and support their students during their daily routines. I've listened carefully to the ways in which these inspiring teachers explained a new concept or lesson, and then turned around and seamlessly taught it several different ways to ensure that each child and each learning style was being supported. I've witnessed the innovative ways the teachers create community and collaboration among the students, a skill that is important when producing responsible members of society. Our teachers are brilliant and resourceful and innovative and successful, despite the many obstacles that we have placed in their path. Our teachers are nothing short of experts, and they are vastly undervalued by our nation, but more to the point, they are undervalued by our own community. We are showing our teachers and support staff that we do not value them in small ways every day, and although pay is part of it, that's not, that's just the tip of the iceberg. We're showing our teachers that we do not value them by not listening to their opinions when discussing needed improvements in classroom and curriculum. We show them that we do not value by overcrowding their classrooms with no plans to solve the issue. We show them that we do not value them by manipulating them through their love and dedication to our students into filling in for too many positions that are left vacant because we have not provided them with the additional support staff needed at school. We show them that we do not value them by not allowing them adequate planning time built into their day. We show them that we do not value them as experts in the education of our children by not supporting programs that encourage teachers to individualize their schoolwork. We show them that we do not value them when they are expected to spend their own money on items that are essential to the workplace and essential to the success of their students. We are showing them that we do not value them when our city and community authorize another eight hundred single-family units to be built within a school zone that is already bursting at the seams. A school which, even if we are getting the much anticipated building addition, we will still be so overcrowded that we will continue to be unable to provide all of our students the basic security of being located inside of the school building. We can do better for our schools, we can do better for our teachers, and we can do better for our support staff. I would like to see Suffolk lead the way for a future of public education. I want Suffolk to prioritize the security of our future over what so many other school districts have done by simply getting on, or getting by on what they can get away with. The stakes are too high for us not to fix it, and I know that together we can. I ask the other owners of our education system to stand up and demand excellence from our public schools. We can be the school system that draws and retains the best and the brightest for the future of education by making intentional decisions that put value back on our greatest resource, our teachers. Our schools, our educators, and our children should not be political pawns. Public school education is not a political issue, it is a moral issue. I am pleased, I'm here to plead with you, as you begin planning for the new school year and a full year of budget, planning that you look forward, look forward and create a better future for Suffolk public schools, their teachers, support staff, and student. I apologize that I am a little late to the party here. I know that the budget is done, is completed for two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen. I mistakenly believed that my responsibility to the system was done in the classrooms as a volunteer, but I now see that my responsibility is also to speak up for our teachers, our students, and our schools. So, I'm going to be speaking with the community members, with our Suffolk Public School Board, and with our city council. Thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you, Ms. Diggs. Are there any other public speakers on non-agenda items? Yes?
My name is Renaud Lassiter. My name is Renaud Lassiter, and following the speaker who just left before me, I was also inspired to assist the public schools, both locally and nationally, with the issue of teachers feeling as though they are overworked and underpaid. I have also attended some meetings at my children's PTA schools and also those of my family and relatives, and also have members in my family who are also teachers. And so, I have come up with a blueprint for a nonprofit organization called TAC, which stands for a TIPPA teacher. TIPPA teacher is a nonprofit organization where teachers will be honored, awarded, acknowledged, and supported. The contributions can come from the community, organizations, students, parents, companies, small and large businesses, athletics, and more. The issue of the budget, this will also assist the Suffolk Department, Board of Education, also the cities nationwide and locally, with parents and the communities becoming more involved. Most of our employment, jobs, positions that we're in now, it was because of a teacher. And our children will become successful now because of a teacher, and they are kind of being left out, and it is our job and our duty to say something about it. I have also been touched by seeing the news where teachers are closing down the schools and having parades, and I feel as though I should make a contribution, and this is how I came up with the idea, because they should not have to make their voice heard in those manners of shutting down education to get attention. And I feel as though the board and parents and students alike, we introduce the community service projects, things like that can be, where the students can actually go out and maybe raise funds for these teachers, and so that it can start at home, we can kind of show our students that teachers are not underappreciated. And by us contributing and showing these teachers that we do appreciate them, it will give you the opportunity to continue to attract and retain these teachers as employment, which is better for the teachers and better for our future. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lassiter. Any others on non-agenda topics?
Someone's coming.
My name is Latoya Kay. Hello, how are you doing? I'm sorry, I'm not dressed for such occasion, but I wanted to take a moment to come out and talk to you.
Name again, please.
Oh, I'm sorry, Latoya Kay. I wanted to take a moment to come out and talk to you guys today about the Early Start Program at Northern Shores Elementary School. It's an awesome program. I had a daughter who was in kindergarten class last year, and I have twins who are in the pre-K class for this year. I have been back and forth with the principal, talking with her about a student who has been bullying everyone in this class. I volunteer at, for the pre-K class, and I have seen this student punching another student. I have also had my kids come home telling me that the teacher has gone to the hospital. She's been hit, kicked on, punched, and this is over and over again. They have started voicing to me and marched that things have been going on. I was told that a chair was thrown at the students while they were sitting on the carpet. I have told, been told that my son has come home and told me that the student has told him, "I'm going to punch you in the face." I have told, been also told that my youngest daughter in the class was told to get out of a chair. He told her, "Get up, B-I-T-C-H." There was no action. I was, I'm just being told by the principal that things are being handled, that, that something's happening. But I have not seen any improvement. This child was half dazed and is now allowed to go to the school for full days now, knowing that this is an issue. There is one person that is in the classroom that assists this child, and I just, I don't know what I can do now, because I moved to this area for Northern Shores. Northern Shores is an excellent school, and I commend you guys for all the hard work that you guys have done. The teachers are excellent. I just want to stand up for the teachers and let my voice be heard for the teachers and for the kids as well, because they're not safe in the classroom. And that was it.
Thank you, Ms. Kay.
Thank you.
Any others? No others? Business by board members? Ms. Skeeter?
I don't have any more business, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Mitnick?
Yes, just a couple of items. Number one, I'd like to recognize Driver Elementary School, on Tuesday evening this week, they had their closing ceremony, and it was amazing the way they brought together the community, the former principals of the school, the current students in school. I'd like to thank, Ms. Jeanne Baird is the music teacher there, she did an excellent job with the program, and everybody worked so hard, and I'd just like to recognize all their efforts. And while we're talking about Driver, of course, we're going to Florence Bowser next year. You know, as I reviewed the positions that we were placing in Colonel Fred Cherry, and I compared to the new positions we were putting in Florence Bowser, it came to mind, you know, we're going from a school of five hundred and eighty-five to a school of close to eight hundred and fifty next year, yet we didn't have any additional office staff, we didn't have any additional dean of students position, we didn't have any extra positions for resource teachers as well. And I was just wondering if that's been given consideration, or if they're going to be transferred internally, or how that's going to be dealt with, so whether that needs to be a report at next month's meeting, or if it can be addressed now, you know, I'd just be interested in knowing that.
Sure, actually, it can be addressed now. We actually have a formula when we're looking at the number of students, and whether it's office staff, whether it's resource teachers. Each office will maintain two people in their office, a bookkeeper and a secretary, and while one person may not have, or two people may not be transferred, or it may not be a new position, it may be a position that we did not fill throughout the year. As far as the resource schedule is concerned, if indeed it's to the point that additional services are needed, then we'll use an itinerant resource teacher that we already have in place. They'll be assigned once all numbers are counted, and we see exactly how many students are there. But it is a formula, and realizing that they will have additional teach, additional students there, they will have the same ratio that there, that there should have as far as the K-three initiative, as well as the resource teachers as well. So, it certainly has been considered and will continue to be reviewed to make certain that.
Is that the same for additional administrative support as far as a dean of students, or?
A dean of students will consider that once the students get there. We don't have a, necessarily a magic number for dean of students on the elementary level. Obviously, with Creekside having a thousand students at one point, we decided to put one there, but we've had schools with eight hundred before without a dean of students.
Thank you, sir.
Sure.
Dr. Buck?
I'd just like to say, as always, thank you, staff members and teachers and community members for your support and the kinds of things that you do. I'd also like to say it was congratulations to those staff members at Driver Elementary. Several of us came, and the program was outstanding. The music teacher did a great job pulling it all together, as I understand from the principal and assistant principal and the people who were there, so I'd just like to give a shout out to them. As always, I'm very proud of the graduates, and as I said before, this is my favorite As always, I'm very proud of the graduates, and as I said before, this is my favorite time during the year. It's also a time that I think I need to say this. Each year, when we get to this point in the year where the council is about to approve the budget, there are, there are facts that are left out that appear to mislead the public. And I think it's important to let you know what the facts are. When we had our discussion, for those who did not come to last month's meeting, we talked about the fact that the energy performance contract program that was being recommended, you could get money from that program. We went down the years and how much money you get. I know that one of the, one of the news articles suggested that there was $1.8 million. The detail that was left out was that it's over 15 years, not something you get right away. We talked about the projects that we were supposed to do. There were 10 projects. That contract would address only three and a half of those projects, leaving six and a half that we'd have to find funding for. And because we do not fund ourselves, we get money from the city. I'd also like to say that the fourth sense tax is not just for schools, it's for schools and the fire department, both of which are needed public entities, so we need to be aware. And lastly, I'd like to say, for those councilmen who stood up and supported the schools, I want to say thank you so much. But it's not over yet. There's a new vote, and I'd like for all of you who are concerned to be present and to let people know, that's our funding agency. We're not passing blame on to anyone, but that's our funding agency. That's how we get our money. We don't get it independently. And so we have to ask for it. And I'd also like to let you know that because it is a budget, any monies that are not spent go back to the city of Suffolk. I was surprised that people didn't know that. But again, if you're not paying attention to that particular thing, you don't know it. But that's the way it is. So just be there and be vigilant and be supportive, and know that every year there seems to be some type of distraction before it's time to vote. Let's not be fooled by distractions, and let's keep our eye on the prize. And thank you. And to my person from Northern Shores, I'm assuming you're my person, if you have a child at North, Northern Shores, so if you'd like to talk with me, I'd be glad to meet with you, and this is, thank you.
Dr. Dubransky?
Just have two things. I'd like to get a teacher report for last year versus this year, those teachers that are leaving for the months of April, May, and June.
Certainly.
And then also a number of suspensions for last year versus this year, same thing.
Okay.
Per month, okay. That's it, that's it, thank you.
Ditto to everything that's been said, and especially next Wednesday, May 16th, when the city council meets again, we need to all talk with our city council members, bend their ear, send some emails, and ask them for full funding. And we want to work with the city, and we want to move forward. So thank you to pay attention to that. Any other comments? Anyone else? Under informational items, I don't believe there are any concerns there. And we'll move on to action on closed meeting items, the personnel report.
Madam Vice Chair, I'd like to move that the personnel report be adopted.
Board Member Brooks Buck?
Yes.
Board Member Dubransky?
Yes.
Board Member Mitnick?
Yes.
Board Member Skeeter?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Barham?
Yes.
Motion carried.
The pupil personnel report?
Madam Vice Chair, I'd like to move that the pupil personnel reports be adopted.
A second.
Board Member Brooks Buck?
Yes.
Board Member Dubransky?
Yes.
Board Member Mitnick?
Yes.
Board Member Skeeter?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Barham?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Student Appeal 17-18/9, excuse me, 17/18-9.
Madam Vice Chair, I'd like to move to deny the appeal of student, of Student Appeal 17-18-9.
Board Member Brooks Buck?
Yes.
Board Member Dubransky?
Yes.
Board Member Mitnick?
Yes.
Board Member Skeeter?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Barham?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Student Appeal 17/18-8.
Madam Vice Chair, I'd like to move to deny the appeal for Student Appeal 17/18-8.
Board Member Brooks Buck?
Yes.
Board Member Dubransky?
Yes.
Board Member Mitnick?
Yes.
Board Member Skeeter?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Barham?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Student Appeal 17/18-7.
Madam Vice Chair, I'd like to move to grant the appeal for Student Appeal 17/18-7.
Board Member Brooks Buck?
Yes.
Board Member Dubransky?
Yes.
Board Member Mitnick?
Yes.
Board Member Skeeter?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Barham?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Excuse me, was there not, and then it's supposed to be to the second one?
To the second one, yeah. I thought there wasn't a tender.
Then to the second one.
As far as the rebuttal?
Yes.
That, that goes without saying?
Yes, that would be included, yes.
Any other concerns? If there are no further comments or concerns, adjourn this meeting.